It's 5:30. I call our city council meeting to order. We have several guests here tonight, and so we're glad that everybody's here, so let's get started. First thing we have is Leanne, or she's going to lead us in the pledge. Pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honorable Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to me, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. We also have with us tonight Jared. You're going to lead us in prayer, lead us in vacation?
Can you pray with me? Father, thank you. Thank you so much for this city. Lord, thank you that we are a city of champions yet again, and Lord, that tonight we get to honor heroes. We're a city also of heroes. So Father, we just thank you so much for this. This city that you've entrusted to us, Lord, we pray for your hand just to be upon it. And we pray for your blessing to be upon your members, upon your leadership. God, we pray for right decisions throughout tonight, but we pray that you would just absolutely bathe this place in your presence and your wisdom and your knowledge and how to walk this out, how to walk out the blessing of the Lord. So Father, we thank you, we love you, we praise you. It's in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, sir. It's always nice to have one of you guys here to lead the prayer. Appreciate that. We had two, we have some presentations tonight. I'm going to turn it over first to our chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the council. I'll ask Officer Parr and Sergeant Moore to stand on both sides of you during this. Mr. Mayor, it's taken us just a little bit to get everyone together, schedules and so forth, everyone that we wanted here to be here tonight. And Dr. Hurley also, I want to say thank you to him and Charlton because we were able to do something very similar with these two individuals at one of the basketball games, a first responder. Appreciation, so thank you again, Dr. Hurley. Ladies and gentlemen, on September 23rd, 2021, at approximately 8:45 PM, Officer Danapar on my right, your left, and Sergeant Robert Moore of the Stevieville Police Department responded to a 911 call regarding an accidental self-inflicted gunshot wound. Upon their quick arrival, they found a young man who was critically injured and bleeding profusely from his leg. They immediately performed life-saving actions, applying a tourniquet, stopping the bleeding, treating the victim for shock, and preparing him for emergency medical services arrival. He would ultimately survive this injury, and the medical professionals that ultimately treated him would advise that had it not been for the actions of these officers and had he lost one more pint of blood, he would not be with us here tonight. The heroic actions of Officer Parr and Sergeant Moore are exemplary of the top-notch professionalism of the men and women of the Stevieville Police Department, and tonight we honor their service with them receiving the Life Saving Medal of the Stevieville Police Department. Their family members will place those medals over their neck, and if everyone will join me as they do that, recognizing their work and thanking them for that. Mr. Mayor, will you join us?
Jared's right, we do have some heroes here. Next, I've asked Dr. Hurley if he would come, Dr. Hurley, the president of Charleston State University, come give us sort of an update of what's going on at Charlton. There's lots of things going on, and some of us hear different things. I thought it'd be a good time just to kind of lay out the table.
Sure you do. Before we do that, I want to, if we could, before our officers leave, we, at our basketball game, we presented a WAC coin, and we wanted to bring President what we call Honor Coin. So if you guys would come back up with Chief, we would like to, if it's okay, Mayor.
You bet, absolutely.
Present them with, Lon Reisman got, he gave them a coin, I feel like I should get one. But Lori's got some coins, and we're more than appreciative. I got a picture with him at least at half court.
We'd like you to do that again.
Yeah, and we want to give Chief, did you give Chief one? I guess he deserves one. He's, he takes my, he takes my midnight calls, and they're usually interesting. It's never good when he calls me or I call him. We appreciate you all. Chief, we, yeah. No, I think that's what makes Stevieville so special is the fact that, you know, here we stand behind the men and women in blue and those that are putting their lives on the line every day to keep us safe. That's, that's Stevieville, the E-Rath, and kind of the Charlton way, and so we're thankful for it. And thanks to the council, thanks Mayor for giving me a few minutes. And I know we have a pretty tight agenda, and I'm going to be brief. Dan, thanks for the friendship, thanks for the partnership. We, you know, anytime you lead a growing, thriving university, there are certain bumps in the road along the way, and sometimes our students make silly decisions, and we have to work through those. And I appreciate the fact that Dan understands, Chief Harris, I'm sorry, that those are teachable moments, right? And we don't throw the student out because they made them safe, we use it as a teachable moment, and I appreciate all you do. I also want to thank the commitment between the city and the university. It's, we came a long ways over the last 10 years from what I hear. Certainly my three years here, it's been incredible to work with all of you. The Harbin Street Project, for example, that's, the throughway that that's going to create is pretty incredible. Just a tremendous opportunity. I want to give you some really quick facts, some really quick updates. Quick facts about our current student body. Ninety-seven percent of our students are from the great state of Texas. In fact, we have the third largest number of Texas counties represented at Charlton. So we have surpassed Texas Tech, Texas State, SFA, any of the other friends you want to choose. The only two we're behind are the two flagships, UT Austin College Station. Forty, 54%, I'm sorry, of our students are first-generation learners. So that means they're the first in their family to attend college. Now, again, I mentioned the Harbin Projects, that's off to a good start from what I hear. We see the progress there. Aquatic Center on campus, we hope to open that in the next 45 to 60 days. Parking garage, retail space, I'm going to have Lori to talk a little bit about that. Talk about the Health Science Facility, Lori, and then I'll come back and close. She knows, she's the person that does, Mayor, the work, and I kind of take credit, but she's going to give us an update on what that looks like.
Yeah, so the parking garage project will be a 600-spot, parking spot facility that will have retail space on the first floor. In that retail space, we have a commitment from Buffalo Wild Wings to open a location there. It will be the first full-service Buffalo Wild Wings on a university campus in the nation, so we're excited about that. Also plans to move the Charlton bookstore from the Student Center out to Washington so it's more accessible to the community and game day activity. And then we have an additional 3,000 square feet that is currently unclaimed, that'll be there on the first floor. And that is at the corner of Washington and St. Felix, so the old Browder lot. You may have seen some work going on there. We've already removed the tanks that were underground, both the two that we knew about and the five that were filled with concrete. So that work has been done in preparation for that project to break ground very soon. I believe it's on the May Board of Regents meeting for construction approval to be forward construction. The Health Sciences Building that Dr. Hurley mentioned will be near, adjacent to the current nursing building on campus, and we have plans to connect those two buildings. It's about an $85 million construction project. At least that's the budget I've given them. It's much higher than that now, so they're working to get it back down into the parameters that we have. But that's to support some of the exciting allied health and rural health programs that we have coming in the next several years. And that's the two projects he asked me to tell you about, and then he disappeared.
That happens to you all the time, doesn't it?
It happens to me all the time, so I'll tell you a little bit about those, about those projects, so, or about those programs. So it is our intention to begin an OT, PT, and PA program, and this is the facility that will house those programs on the Charlton campus. As you might imagine, the labs for those type of programs are extensive. And so we also will expand our current nursing capacity. So that building has been funded by the state legislature, so we're excited about that and ready to get underway. We're still in the programming phase right now.
Yes, sir.
Your turn.
Sorry.
So if I stole your thunder on programs.
Well, that's, so the PA, PT, OT, one of the things that I think the city, we need to be thinking about is the sheer number of bodies that that will bring to Stevieville in terms of new faculty, staff, and students. Both of those programs are doctoral level, even though the Physicians Assistant Studies Program is in theory a master's degree, it is a terminal degree in that field. And so until they have a doctorate in physical therapy, I'm sorry, Physicians Assistant Studies, which is coming, that's terminal. So we have three new terminal degrees, and that's a lot of, so you're thinking, you know, roughly 40 to 50 new faculty members here in Stevieville. We chose to launch those programs here because we feel like the, we are the institution that's focused on meeting the rural underserved areas. That's really, really important to us. We know across, pardon.
And us.
Yeah, well, when I say us, all of us. It's important that someone focuses on these rural regions that are just, they're, the need for primary care physicians is never going to be met because we're not producing enough primary care physicians in the country. Now, that's next. Someday, we're going to address that as well. But we have to start with these programs that will build a solid foundation to allow us to then to start thinking about, does a college of osteopathic medicine, does a college of optometric medicine, programs that I've started before that have a huge economic impact, but it's a game changer in terms of the region we serve. The Doctorate of Physical Therapy and the Doctorate of Occupational Therapy, if you call not only our rural hospitals, but any hospital, THR, Cook Children's, they all are desperate for, in particular, those two fields. And so we feel really good. Athletic enhancements, Lon Reisman could give you a better report because Lon does an incredible job at managing athletics, and he does an incredible job of spending money on athletics. We are, you know, you've probably seen the new baseball, softball fields, turf that took place. Those were incredible projects. In fact, Thinker Baseball and Softball Field are the only projects that, what's the lighting system? It's, the University of Alabama football, from what we gather, is the only other institution that has similar lighting system. Football Fieldhouse Phase Two will start soon. That will finish out that project where we need a team meeting space. I think a lot of you know our football program, we've been insanely successful. As we've made the transition from Division Two to Division One, Coach Whitten and his staff, they need more space because we have, you know, more students, athletes, more football players, but also the expectation of recruiting to a Division One institution, it's costly, right? It's the cost of doing business, the price of progress. So that work will start soon, and that will give Coach Whitten and his staff what they need to recruit and compete at a national level. And finally, what I wanted to talk to all of you about and be really transparent is the Hotel and Convocation Center. Many of you know that, all of you know that it is something that has really held us back as an institution in terms of conference affiliation, being able to host NCAA regional events. Our track, for example, our track is not NCAA championship certified, and so we have to address that if we ever want our students to be able, if they run a race in 100 meter, 200 meter, et cetera, and we set a record, Darren knows this, that record doesn't stand because it's not an NCAA certified track. So that we're addressing. We're going to move the track from the football field because there's no way of making a 200-meter through lane. So we're going to remove the track, we're going to build it across just literally in where the, some of the intramural fields are now. We will build a new intramural turf field in the middle of the track so our student at, or I'm sorry, our students in general will have an opportunity to continue to participate in those intramurals. Hotel's important because it's in unison with the Convention Center or Convocation Center, which is a basketball arena. We just can't call it a basketball arena. It will serve its main purpose for us as a basketball facility, convocation, but what it will allow the city to do, Alan and I have talked about this, the ability to bring conferences, seminars, those types of things to Stevieville versus Granbury, Weatherford, Fort Worth. A lot, I could see a tremendous opportunity in the rodeo industry, right? And the ranching industry, being able to bring some of those conferences to Stevieville. That's roughly right now, and this is today, and that could change tomorrow. It's about 7,500 seats, which puts us at the threshold we need to get the mid to, not upper-tier concerts, but certainly a mid-tier concert. A lot of artists that we would want to attract here, they need about 7,000 seats. That's that sweet spot. They will not come for less than, it's just hard to make the math work. So we're excited about that project. We're going to need your help, we're going to need you to partner. I mean, we've got a lot of conversation, obviously, to take place. One of the things that was really important to Lori and I is, especially with the hotel, we needed it in proximity of the university of the Convocation Center, but we didn't want to hurt the city from the ability to capture some tax revenue and et cetera, because we have to be in this together. I can't ask you guys to continue to support and do and do, and then we not partner and give back as well, right? So it has to be a two-way street. That was important to us. We felt, we made that very clear with the group that we're working with. The Convocation Center just brings just so much potential and so much opportunity. It also allows us to think about, you know, there's a lot of redistrict, I'm sorry, reclassification, lots of conference movement. I think we're in a really strong position at some point to think about FBS-level football and then what that entails, we don't know, but we're in conversation. We talked to the WAC Commissioner today, we have some other folks that are interested in Charlton, and we're going to make the best decision for the institution, but also the best decision for this region. And those are all real game changers. Those are, for the next 50 years, it will forever change, you know, the institution. So the program, the academic programs, we talked about, the athletic programs we talked about. I'll stop, and we, Lori and I can make up answers to any question that I have. Doug, I appreciate your partnership. We talk a lot, it's important, just as I talk to Chief Harris a lot, and I occasionally call Alan and bother him when I'm thinking about, you know, things that I see as an opportunity or challenges, and I'm just, I'm thankful for all of you. It means a lot that you're supportive. We may not always agree on every single decision or aspect, but I think collectively working through that and having these types of conversations are really important to be healthy moving forward. Any questions?
Well, I just want to thank you both for taking the time to be here for a meeting tonight and share your vision with not only us, but those listening on the live stream as well. And thank you to Charlton for the economic driver that it is in the community, but the willingness to partner and make it a, as you said, a two-way street, and we appreciate that very much.
Now, I got an enrollment update this morning. So last year was a record, as all of you know, this spring was a record. Our applications are up 16% over last year. The number of students that we've accepted is up about 12%, almost 13%. And the number of students that have already deposited, it's a record number. So, and the thing about it is, the growth is at our Stevieville campus. A lot of folks think it could be Waco, it could be Fort Worth. We've been pretty flat there, right? One, because we only have one building in Fort Worth, and it's maxed at about 2,500 students. But the students that are applying to Charlton, they want to be here. And we're getting students from the Valley, we talked about that. We're getting students, some of our biggest growth areas are, clearly, the Metroplex is about 35, 36% of our student base. We're now over 10% out of the greater Austin area, we're 10% out of San Antonio and now the Valley. And those students are looking for our way of life, right? We teach face-to-face. We did a lot of things differently against the grain, if you will, during the pandemic because we felt like our students deserved a college experience, and that's what they asked for. We're not an online institution. Some of our professors do it really well, but it's really tough to teach ranch management online. Some of you know that in this room. And so we felt like, we felt like we had an obligation to our students and to the taxpayers to do what, students choose Charlton for a reason. And I know all, many of you in here attended Charlton, you've been there, and that's, you know, we're going to continue to grow, but we're never going to grow so much that every student, you know, they have a name, they're not a number. We know their hopes, dreams, and aspirations. And I think as long as we manage that in a way that we keep Charlton moving forward, but we don't lose our identity, that's the trick in all this.
Any else? I want to say thank you for coming, for.
Sorry I had to step out, it's, you know, Kendall's birthday. She thought we were meeting at 5:30. I'm like, Kendall, I'm speaking. It's 6:30.
Well, I appreciate your partnership with the city, both of y'all, your work that I've done with you. Just for announcement, the hotel, we're having a meeting next Thursday, our committee, subcommittee is doing that, and so hopefully we'll have some more information soon after that.
Yeah. Transparency, we wanted to share.
And I'll tell you, that your personal desire to help the city of Stevieville be better as well. With the contributions you've done to the stormwater issue with Harbin Drive, it's a big deal. I just want to make sure everybody understands, you know, Charlton is ponying up $1.4 million towards that stormwater, which saves us a lot of money in the city of Stevieville. And also, you mentioned, you want to mention something about, are you ready to mention the student housing change, the freshman sophomores on?
Yeah, well, we're at a point now, that's a great point, I forgot about that. We're at a point now where we're out of beds. We have about 4,000 beds, 3,994 beds, so we're at 4,000 beds on campus. And we have a waiting list for those beds, and we only now, we currently require freshmen and sophomore, sophomores to stay on campus. Well, we're probably going to have to reduce that to just freshmen only. And part of it is, you know, out of necessity. We really believe in the next four or five years, our freshman class, right now, our freshman class next year will be somewhere between 2,800, 2,900. And those are, a lot of those are, when I say freshmen, remember, all of those are Stevieville because we do not accept freshmen at Waco or Fort Worth or Realist Bryan because those are degree-completed programs. So those are only juniors and seniors. So when I say a freshman class of that size, they're coming to Stevieville. And so as we continue to grow, we're going to run out of beds, and I think it's a tremendous opportunity for those that are in the private sector, you know, some building opportunities because the students are coming, right? Fort Worth is growing, as all, we all know, typically cities, metropolitan cities grow north because they typically grow two water or utility grids. Fort Worth can't grow north because they're nestled between Denton and Dallas and Frisco and all the other northern cities that are growing, and so their growth is coming to Granbury, Weatherford, and Stevieville. And I think that's a tremendous opportunity for us. Now, part of that is, how do we house all these students? I would personally appreciate if some private developers would step up and help ease that burden for us because we have a lot of capital construction needs that we need to invest in academic infrastructure versus beds. So I think, again, Doug, that's a great point, Mayor, back to that win-win. There's a lot of opportunity for those private developers.
Without a doubt, Stevieville has benefited from Charlton economically.
Right.
Even with our sales tax, we're going to have a report tonight about sales tax increases as well. That comes from a lot of things, but largely comes from students at Charleston State University, and we appreciate that partnership a lot.
Well, I think too, we have to think about, you know, the amenities, what you all did with, you know, the more restaurants and more shopping, those are things that when a student, prospective student and their parents come and they visit Charlton, they expect to see a level of amenity on campus and off campus. And especially when you build programs like PA, OT, PT, and if we ever think about a college of medicine or a college of optometric medicine, those are, you know, those families, those students are typically non-traditional, married, sometimes a child or two, and so that looks very different. And the housing needs for those individuals are different, but also there's some employment opportunities for those spouses that are, they're only here typically two or three years. So what we're building, what you all are building and being part of, that's a game changer for us. I can't tell you how many times we've heard families talk about little things, just like hobby lobby and all the other amenities that we're adding, that adds up, and that creates a culture of people want to be here and they will want to stay here.
Well, there's more to come.
Yeah, well, we appreciate, we're thankful. So we wanted to give each of you an honor coin to say thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for all you do for us. Well, you know, Lon Reisman is really, he gets these WAC coins out, and I said, Lon, I want to get my coins out. I've got a whole box of them. There are three on there, you'll see the three core values. Those are all what our students want, and so we're excited. We're deeply appreciative of your partnership. Any other questions?
Any questions?
We'll be out of your way.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, I took you away for a birthday party.
No, it's 6:30.
6:30, okay. Yeah, you go. 32 minutes. All right. Next, on a general discussion with the citizens, do we have any sign up? Anybody want to come and speak, address the council? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next item, which is a Parks and Leisure Committee. Darren, we have one item we're going to pull from the agenda, which is item number four.
Yes, we are pulling that from the agenda. Does that override this one too? We're going to go ahead and do this one.
You can report, Ken.
We can report on this one?
You don't have to.
Okay. So staff presented to committee a proposal for a new ordinance, Chapter 97, Parks and Facility Rules and Regulations, and one of the major things that came out of that was allowing 90.10, which allows dogs at our special events, things like a concert and a park series. So you'll now be allowed to bring dogs to those type of events in the parks, so. And we tabled some other things, and we'll talk about those because we're tabling the rest of this until our next meeting, until we go back to committee.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir. Public Works, Mr. Nix.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a Public Works Committee meeting on 15th of February, and the only item that we discussed was a proposed rate increase from our solid waste collectors and disposers waste connections. They have been working, this company and its company's predecessors have been doing the collection in Stevieville for many years. They collect solid waste. They collect solid waste and dispose of it for the citizens. They also collect construction and demolition debris for the citizens, and they use our landfill for that. They have come, as per their contract allows, requesting a rate increase for all customers. The bottom line is, it will be a 7.76% increase in the existing rate. That will amount to a 92% per month, and a 149 per month for residential and commercial polycart users, respectively. This rate adjustment, although it sounds large, because they have not raised rates in several years prior to this, over the past seven years, it's only a 1.3% annual increase. So they have done their part to be a good provider for the city. It is part of the contract that allows them to come and ask for these rate increases based on CPI. And we all know what inflation has done to almost all of the commodities and products that we buy. The committee discussed this, and it was recommended from the committee that we recommend to the council that this be approved. And I would make a motion to approve the amendment to their contract to reflect this 7.76% increase for their current usage.
Motion, or second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Same sign of opposed, motion passes.
That's all that we had, Mr. Mayor.
And I want to say thanks to them also for the golf tournament. I met with them the other day about their golf tournament. They're going to add some pretty good, big flair of things to it next time. Nomination Committee, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. The nominations committee met and discussed several different things. One was update on existing projects, ongoing projects. One of those is for the Main Street program, to look at certain lighting designs and concepts. Those will be, come back to the committee on the next committee meeting on the 15th or so. And then, that will be, if the committee approves that, it will come to the council then at the next meeting. And it's with regard to updated improved lighting as a recommendation for, from the Main Street program for the downtown, particularly the square. And we expect that that will come through in the next, at the next meeting. With regard to our review of the council rules of procedure, that's an ongoing process, and will be considered over the next couple of months overall. And it's just basically an update of our rules of council procedure for meetings and so forth. We have two vacancies that we would like to submit to the board coming from the nominating committee. The first is to move an alternate Tom Hines into position of place seven on the Planning and Zoning Commission. That is recommended by unanimous vote of the committee. And the second one is to move Matt Miller to alternate number one on the Board of Adjustment. And we recommend that, the committee does, and I would make that a motion that we move those two people into those particular positions.
Both same time?
Yes.
Second, Mayor.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? See the vote, all in favor, say aye. Same sign of opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. That ends our report, sir.
Mr. Thurmond.
Thank you, Mayor. The Personnel Committee met February 15. Staff presented a preliminary compensation plan for each position, each non-public safety position within the city with steps. Mr. Barnes explained that the plan provided, that was provided, was very, in the very early stages, was not a final plan, and employees still needed to review that plan, and how current employees would be integrated into the steps. There's a few other positions that still need to, would need to compare some more information on. Mr. Barnes indicated that a more complete plan would be presented at the March committee meetings, and I believe we're going to meet soon about that and have that ready for March committee meetings. So there was no action on this. It was just a preliminary presentation, and that was all that the committee had.
Thanks, sir. Monica.
Mayor, Council. As of January 31, we are in a good position for our financial indicators. For our property tax, we received 2.99 million in the month of January, which is only 4,000 or 0.07% increase over the funds collected last fiscal year to date. But the amount collected is 92.58% of our budget, which is 0.57% or 38,000 less than we anticipated. So we're a little lower on property tax, but I don't think it's anything to get hugely concerned about. Our sales tax, we received 654,000 in sales tax in January, which is 377,000 or 15.79% more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. The amount collected is 37.82% of our budget, which is 4.28% higher than we anticipated. The target budget for operating revenue was 13.3 million. We received 14 and a half million in operating revenue fiscal year to date, which is 1.2 million over our target budget. And that's due to our sales taxes, our service charges, and other income. The target budget for our operating expenditure is 7.7 million. We've expended 6.8 million fiscal year to date, which is 919,000 under our target budget. The operating revenue received last year was 12.9 million, compared to the current year's 14.5 million is 1.6 million increase, and that's due to our property taxes, sales taxes, franchise taxes, hotel occupancy taxes, the additional sports venue tax, our service charges, and some other income. The operating expenditures last year were 6.9 million, compared to the current year's 6.8 million, which is a 74,000 decrease, which still relates to our repair of the public safety building that occurred in the prior year.
Questions from Monica?
Are we pacing budget-wise for the sports venue tax similar to what you anticipated?
I think we're a little bit more than I had originally anticipated.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks for that amazing introduction.
I didn't say anything about it, Mr. Sanford, anything else?
Not today.
You don't have to black that.
I've got too many facts to give you. Too many things. First of all, it was on this day that Yellowstone, not the TV series, but the park became the world's first national park. Did you know that? Yeah, you did know that. Good. Mickey Mantle announced his retirement on this day in 1969. Everybody with Mickey Mantle playing? He ended with 536 home runs and a 298 batting average over 18 seasons, much like yours career. And for all those believers out there, today is...
That's my golf score, right?
Yeah, today is Justin Bieber's 28th birthday. So I think I would end on that one. I did want to address one thing. You know, Dr. Hurley did talk about beds and so forth. And as y'all know, we have added over 800 beds primarily for student housing in the last, well, since I've been here. And we have several more that will probably be coming. But that is not the end. I mean, we've got a lot more that takes place. We would rather see them in multifamily-type situations and single-family homes, but obviously, we have a lot of them in single-family homes. So, anyway, a couple updates on just some of the projects in town. I can only give a couple because of nondisclosure situations. But Washington Commons, as you know, Hobby Lobby opened since the last time we have spoken. Opened in mid-February, and they're doing great guns. And interestingly enough, they have, a large majority of their initial opening staff came from other stores to help kind of set the tone for what it should be here. And we're excited about what they're putting in place. If you haven't, if you've been more than once, you realize that they have sold out several times of product in different areas within the store. So that's a good sign. By mid-March, we'll have four more stores that will open up, and by June, the rest of the complex will be open. On the stable across the street, our newest development, vertical construction will begin on June 1. You've seen already the site development and clearing, which looks phenomenal already. And vertical construction should start, assuming there's some factors that go into play, especially with the crossing there and the new street development. But if all that gets going the way it should, then June 1, we should start seeing some vertical construction. By the end of the year, we should see some things open, which is obviously exciting. So I have some factoids I want to give you. A couple weeks ago, I was in Houston and continuing some, not only the educational process, but the recruitment process for different kinds of businesses. We met with several folks there. We do it again. The mayor will join us in the Dallas area towards the end of this month for some more recruitment efforts. And we will, you always got to load the bench. You know, we have some nice things going, but you got to load the bench and make sure that we have the kinds of things coming in. Couple of things that are impactful, I think, for us. U.S. population growth has actually slowed down. If you haven't heard this, in 2021, it was the first time since 1937 that the U.S. population grew by fewer than 1 million people, which was interesting.
That were documented.
Pardon me?
That were documented.
Good point.
What'd you point out?
I have so many things I want to say, and I can't. We turned the cameras off. But anyway, that's an interesting point, that we'll see, not the effects so much this year or next year, but if you think about that whole generation, well, it won't be a generation, but a year's worth of births that did not occur, or did occur for that matter, it really does change. One of the interesting things is remote workers. When we start talking about employment, it is estimated that 38% of all college students last year took a remote job, which is impacting obviously a lot of other kinds of positions. You'll see almost, I think it's over 90% of all businesses now have remote as an option, not necessarily for everyone, but as an option. In February of 2022, so just this last month, over 36 million workers expected to remain full-time remote, even after all this pandemic piece, whatever, if there's an end to it. Once the wave changes, they remain in a remote capacity. Over 500,000 remote workers are moving to a new city or state every year. And this is something that we might be able to take advantage of. If you think about the taxes, when if they move to our town, they're contributing in taxes and other things, and they certainly are consumers, and they probably will buy a home, or at least have something where they might contribute from a property or adware standpoint as well. Couple of other ones, sports tourism. One of the things in sports that's of interest, it is still an economic driver. And, you know, Dr. Hurley talked about some of the athletic facilities, some of the other things. Across the nation, 180 million people in the U.S. traveled to a sports event, either as a participant or spectator, in 2019, which is pre-pandemic. And they're expecting this year to rise by as much as 10% over that. Think about 180 million, 200 million people traveling for sports. Obviously, we'll want to capture our share for that. It generated 69 million room nights, 45.1 billion in direct spending, and 103 billion in economic impact. So there is something very large there. A few more notes I wanted to give you, and then I will get off the stage. Your short meeting has just turned longer. Sorry about that. One of the things that has impacted us in terms of what this pandemic has done, both positively and negatively, people have now come out of the factor where they're just going and traveling, or going and spending on specific things. And now they're going back to what they had pre-pandemic, which is spending on experiences. So as we piece together these developments and piece together other things, we have to understand that it's not just putting store X in there, it's the whole experience of what they have in Stevenville, and maybe even within a development. So there's some things that happen along those lines. From a gross domestic product standpoint, we have surpassed pre-pandemic levels. We're now at about 19.81 trillion dollars. In pre-pandemic, the fourth quarter of 2019, it was 19.2. So we have already surpassed that. Wages, this is a concern for a lot of employers. The wages also have risen, which is a good thing, if it gives you the disposable income, which we all want. The problem is, it's also costing a lot more for businesses. And at some point, we're going to reach this critical mass, where it's going to be very difficult to manage that, to keep employees and to even recruit employees. It's costing a lot more than it did pre-pandemic, as we know. Monetary policy, we anticipate that there will be at least, and others will know this as well, but at least three to five rate hikes over the course of the next 12 to 18 months. Can't predict that exactly, but that could impact a lot of things as well, when you start looking at it. We anticipate at least three. We'll see how that pans out. Couple of interesting facts about movement patterns, which we have to track to find out what people are doing. Outside the home, it went down 10.7% of just the home itself during the pandemic time. That is starting to kind of equalize back up to where it was. In fact, it's actually, it had a big spike after everybody felt like it was safe to get out, and now it's kind of leveling back out. Outside of retail and restaurants, that dropped 17%. And in the workplace, and again, this goes back to some of the remote opportunities that presented themselves, was 21.3%. So we had a big drop, or a big drop, rather, in those, but we are seeing some of those normalize. In population growth, you know, the census was a big deal this last year. We'll see how this pans out in exact numbers, but Texas accounted for 79.1% of the net national population growth across the United States in 2021. So, you know, it's kind of like a whole other country. This is an interesting thing on the labor market. We are now at an all-time high in employment, even though we can't seem to find employers, or employees, rather, for a lot of our jobs, or a lot of our businesses. It's actually higher than it's ever been by far, in terms of who's in the labor market right now. So we'll see how that goes. So either we have a whole lot more businesses, or just a whole lot more opportunities, which is indicative of, or certainly the economy is indicative of that. In Texas, as far as employment, the U.S. is still, as a nation, below where they were, but Texas is up at one of our highest ever in terms of employment, in the numbers of millions. That's through December. I don't have the current ones right now on that. Sales tax rebates, and Monica has told you some good news on our own stuff on the sales taxes and some of these. But on rebates, we have, in 2019, in billions, it was 6.2 billion dollars across the state of Texas. We are currently in 2000, or last year, rather, in 2021, post-pandemic, was at 7.14. So again, we're starting to see people spend their money once they get out. What we're hoping for, and what we're really watching, is this just cabin fever, and they're getting out after being cooped up for a year? Or is it reality, and that these are the trends that are going forth because of the economic standpoint of the state and the nation? We think that it's actually normalizing, and that this is where we are as a country. Higher wages, more disposable income, and people are going to continue to spend. So I don't think we're going to be in any bad shape in the near future. From a housing standpoint, Texas, as a state, had the most building permits, 167,000 building permits in 2021. That was the highest in at least eight years. Number of homes sold, over 416,000 homes were sold in the state of Texas in 2021, which, again, was the highest amount ever. And then lastly, 200, just from California alone, and we think about the economic standing of Texas, just from California alone, between June of 2018 and June of 2021, so even through the pandemic time period. And when I say that, I'm not downplaying that the pandemic is or isn't here. I'm just saying that 2020 is considered the year of the pandemic. There's the, whatever you want to say from after that. The 265 companies relocated their headquarters from California to Texas, or, excuse me, from California outward, somewhere else. Texas had 114 of those of 265. And the next closest state was Tennessee, and they had 25. So we had 114, they had 25. Arizona was third with 17. What does that mean for us? As we start recruit, or not start, but as we continue recruitment in terms of industry and manufacturing, we're not really doing that here in Texas. We're going out to other states. And we have, I think we're going to be in 12 different manufacturing trade shows across the nation throughout the course of the year. The nice thing about it is, we've hired companies that are there in our stead on some of those, so we don't have to do all the traveling. But we provide them the information, they go out there and put our name out there, and then we do the follow-ups, and we'll see where that lands. But just so you know a little bit about it, we don't necessarily just go down the street and try to get a manufacturer out of the neighboring town. We're getting them out of other states where they're looking to move. And obviously, Texas has a phenomenal track record in terms of support. So it's not just things that I'll come to the city council for. The state also wants to win those battles, and that's going to be very helpful in securing some help. We currently have two industries right now where we are securing state help to, for their expansions, or for other things that they have going on. I'm not at liberty to talk about them publicly, other than to say that they are our own folks that we're feeding with some help from the state government. So, it's good stuff. All right?
Questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Don't forget, Justin Bieber, 28. Y'all have a drink tonight, don't they?
Thank you, sir. Consent agenda.
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign of opposed. Consent agenda's approved. Comments by city manager?
We have council committee meetings on March 15, and the regular, the next regular council meeting is on April 5. That's my report, sir.
Leeann.
I just want to congratulate the Stevenville baseball team for putting on their first alumni game. Lots of people, alumni came from out of town, and it was nice to catch up with some of the people that graduated a long time ago. people that graduated a long time ago. So I'm proud of them for that, and I hope everybody voted today. It's very important.
Still have 41 minutes.
That's right.
Exactly. So that's it.
Get a chance, go vote. If you hadn't already, come downtown. There's a lot of great things going on. Hearsay's got some stuff going on tonight, and Hope Like Newton's got a few things going on too, so come check out downtown Stephenville.
Darren.
No comment. Nothing to say.
Got nothing? No comment.
I have one very important announcement, Mayor. Extremely important. I'd like to wish my beautiful bride happy birthday.
Yeah. Even triple the list today.
She will have many stars in her crown, most of which I have put there, but she is a year older and a year wiser today, and in my eyes, a year more beautiful.
Smart man.
Gerald.
Nothing.
Only thing I have to say is, I've been invited to participate in a 377, U.S. 377 Quarter Coalition. Have you heard about that?
Yes.
Okay, are you going to participate in that as well? Or is it just Mayor? I can't remember.
No, I got an email.
Okay. We'll start participating in that. I have a meeting also with the mayor of Granbury on that project, so there's, obviously, everybody wants to know why we stopped 12 times every time we go to Granbury. He was talking about that today on the phone. All right. With that said, in compliance to the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Code, Texas Codes, annotated in accordance with Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney on Pending or Contemplative Litigation, and Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We will do that.